Don't have the back fully vaccinated, you have to get a test.
Mondays are.
On Sunday at your own expense on your own time.
Alright, we're recording.
Alright, roll call, Mr. Turner.
Mayor Judge.
Here.
Commissioner Meeks.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ike Meyer.
Here.
Commissioner Dolger.
Here.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Here.
Alright, I need minutes approved for meeting held on September twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the same side? Alright. Oh wait, is he ready to come in? Alright, like to introduce our new Officer Eleven.
Oh. Just in time for the new season of Stranger Things. That's such a good looking dog.
He's beautiful.
Wow. It is a pretty dog. He is.
He is.
Can't tell he's got a mask on.
Yeah. Alright, this is our new Officer Eleven. Uh, I am pleased to say, uh, he is replacing Ace and what we really liked about Ace is his distemperment. Um, and just very easygoing and everything. And Officer Hopper reports to me that Eleven, um, is just as good if not better with people. Um, so he will start his training tomorrow at the Decatur. So we're really excited to get Officer Hopper as well as Officer Eleven trained. We'll see who trains who. But anyways, uh, welcome to my part of the police department.
That's awesome.
So what's gonna, what do you, you're not gonna call him Eleven, are you?
His name is Eleven.
Yes.
Oh. Okay.
Maybe I've seen Stranger Things.
Probably, yeah.
It's on Netflix.
I'm sure, huh?
It's on Netflix.
It's a Netflix movie.
Oh. Oh, you mean actually that's something, the Stranger Things?
Stranger Things is a show and the Allen Dale kindergarten picked his name.
Okay.
They they kicked it because nine one one equals eleven, but I liked it because in Stranger Things, the two main characters are Eleven and Hopper.
Oh. Good.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Which is really kinda cool.
Yeah, it is.
Anyways, he's beautiful.
He is a pretty dog.
Is there any way that you could go that way just a little bit to make sure that the camera picks up?
You can walk out in front of us.
And it might not pick it up. I'm showing a dark screen, so.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Good dog.
So are you going up there the whole time to train?
Yeah, we home on weekends, yeah.
Okay.
So how old is he?
Will the dog stay there?
How old is Eleven?
He's three.
Yes.
Three years old.
He, um, tell us a little bit about where he came from and everything else.
Uh, he was born in the Netherlands. Um, so he has a passport and everything. And then, uh, and he moved stateside to Alabama and that's where I went and picked him up from.
So.
And he loves his chin scratchers.
More like a pup than.
Mm-hmm.
He looks.
Pretty dog.
He's funny. He's gorgeous.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Yeah.
See ya.
I wanna thank Mr. Turner and Chief McWilliams. Um, one of the requests that I had, uh, being with the community policing is that, um, we have an, a dog, a canine unit that was, had the, not say playtime, but the off work and on work abilities. Uh, we don't want a dog that's aggressive all the time. And, um, you know, Ace was very good. You could take him out in public. We did many events with him. And I believe Eleven will have the same distemper as, uh, you know, Officer Ace did. So, thank you guys for your hard work and research and finding Eleven. So. Alright, what the media's all been waiting for. Um, as far as reports, I'm going to Halloween. I kinda put it out there on Facebook to kinda just see what the public wanted to do. Um, it was unanimously two days. Uh, what's the council's thought part on this? I know there's some trick or treats and stuff going on. Um, but the last couple of years, we've done two. I didn't know if we were gonna continue with that or not.
What, number days?
Uh, two, the thirtieth and thirty-first, Saturday, Sunday.
I I say so myself, but.
I say with it being on the weekend, if it's during the week, that's a different story. But with it being during the weekend, I think that's acceptable.
Being Sunday, you know, I I personally like just having one normally, but with it being on a Sunday night, um, I think you about have to have.
Okay.
Unless you're just gonna do it on the thirtieth, which you don't really wanna do that, I don't think so.
Tell them what days you're going trick or treating.
What day am I going?
Yeah.
If you're gonna do two days, I'm going both days then.
Alright, that's awesome. Uh, so, uh, we will have Halloween on the thirtieth and thirty-first, so everybody can plan for that. Now, I've had a couple interesting requests. Um, the, uh, several people, and I talked to J D about this just to get his input also, uh, being he lives on Cherry Street, but I've had a lot of requests on closing Cherry Street down, um, for the trick or treating. Um, cause I guess the next thing is, is the hours. I know in the past, we've done four thirty to eight. Do we wanna stick with that?
I I don't care about the hours. I I think closing Cherry Street down's a good idea. I think it's very dangerous.
We would open it for, um, the numbered streets to go through to alleviate any parking issues, but with just the amount of people that are on Cherry, um, I know a number of years ago, um, what I walked, I can't remember what officer I walked it with, and it was just crazy. So with the golf carts and U T Vs now increasing that traffic, um, you know, several residents down in that area thought closing Cherry, um, you know, each block would be a s- a good safety. So.
Have we always done it at four thirty? Seems early to me. I mean, it's named Dark at four thirty.
Yeah.
I don't. Mikey?
I don't know.
You good with it?
I mean, I have no objection as long as we can, uh, keep the, uh, numbered streets open. That way we don't run into parking issues and congestion. Obviously, as we all know, Cherry Street is very.
Yeah.
Dangerous. Uh, we always run the risk. And on the pass, if our departments kinda made some passes through there too, I think, to the pass. Um, you know, and, you know, we could always, I could always see if someone's interested if, if you guys feel it's necessary to see if I can have someone come in and just kinda regulate that.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Or whatever you guys think, but I'm not opposed to, to, we're gonna have enough cones.
Yep.
I mean, look at Mayor from third to ninth, or?
I'd say, how many, are there still the numbers that there used to be? I mean, I know the last year, there was COVID numbers, and this year, I don't know that that's gonna be picked back up. But what about the people that actually live on those, that have access from Cherry to get home? If we start at four thirty, then we're limiting their ability to get to their house by closing the street.
Yeah, well, I mean, like I said, it was just brought up. That's why I brought the council to get you guys' feedback on what you guys wanted to do. Um, a lot of them were basing it off of Alany. Um, I think it's Whittle Street or something like that, up in Alany. That's real similar to Cherry and Mount Carmel. And, um, like I said, I had multiple people ask me about that, so.
I walk it every year and it's, it's a zoo. Like, it's, it needs to be shut down.
Should we change the, maybe from like five?
Five to eight.
Five thirty and that get, get off of work at five.
It's Saturday and Sunday.
Well, it's Saturday, Sunday.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's true. That's true.
That is true.
So.
So, yeah.
I mean, not that the people don't, I mean, some people may still be working, you know, getting off that.
Yeah.
Right.
If if you place the cones in an operating, I mean, homeowners could still easily get into their home as long as we don't completely shut it off, as long as they.
Yeah.
Sure they're reasonable. Um, the other question I would have is, uh, would the, uh, golf carts and such be permitted to drive, or you wanna completely shut off?
What are you thinking?
I.
And you can get hit by a golf cart same as you can a car. So, I mean, I'm thinking if you're gonna cut it off, then cut it off.
Cut it off for everybody.
I mean, I don't, I don't have an opinion. I just want some clarification.
My opinion is people pay less attention on golf carts and U T Vs than they do in an actual vehicle.
They still have the cross, so you're gonna have a lot of traffic under intersection. So it's, you can still run the risk.
I think your, the main areas on the trick or treating would be Fifth, Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth. I mean, it's been a while since I've went trick or treating. You two would know.
I I've only been on Cherry Street once. I usually stay close to home, our neighborhoods.
Yeah, no kidding. Plenty of candy there, isn't there?
And we may have more people come for, you know, feeling like it's more safer for the children, and we may have other showing too.
Yeah. Like I said, I know, um, when I spoke to Jay about it, cause usually, you know, he hands out the full-size candy bars, so his ha- his house gets hit pretty hard. Uh, at least is what he told me. So anyway, um, he said that, you know, he was all in favor of, you know, at least shutting it down in front of his house, but it didn't matter to him. But, anyway, if we wanna think about that and announce that later, we can. If not, we just go ahead and then start working.
Say do it. Go ahead and do it.
Okay.
Get it out to the public.
I just see what everybody thinks. I I'm, I'm, I'm meant to do it all.
I'm good with it. I, ours is just whatever works best with the police department.
Yep, I agree.
They need to adjust to make it work. Give them the ability to do it.
The folding barricades or cones? Or both?
It doesn't make any difference as long as we have something or the, uh, homeowners can still get in. I mean, even if we just set two barricades up at each.
Yeah.
Kinda like we do, or even at least one and then have someone regulating it.
Yeah.
Um, we typically just like the parades. We don't really have that much trouble with people complying with it once they kinda see what's going on.
Yeah. Francis, you got anything?
No, I would say if that gets more cold, like I'll key down there, we can use the bathroom. Maybe something on the website or something like that, or get it out.
Okay. Okay. Susan, you good? Okay. Um, alright. So we'll go ahead and do that. Um, I know it's down here in new business. Um, with the passing of Ed Hicks, he was a police fire commissioner. And I need to fill that spot with, um, we're advertising right now for a firefighter position. So if anybody's interested, um, the application's on our website. So please feel free and get that in as soon as possible, so we can start that process. Um, but anyways, um, I would like to appoint Cassandra Goldman to the police fire commission. Um, Cassandra has been great to work with, um, in the past. She knows the police side, she knows the fire side, and she knows the law side, being a past state's attorney and regular attorney. So, um, me and Mr. Turner and, uh, Fire, not Fire, Police Chief McWilliams, sorry, it's been a long day. Um, came up, uh, at, you know, with a list of people, and we felt that she would probably be the best fit for our needs. So, I'd like a motion to appoint Cassandra Goldman as the next fire police commissioner.
I'll make it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same side? Next thing I've got, um, me and, uh, Mr. Turner went to the I M L conference, Illinois Municipal League Conference up in Chicago. And one of the big things that I heard about in the sessions and the meetings I was in, police officers and getting them and, you know, to give you an idea, I spoke with the mayor of Chicago, and, um, she said usually the Chicago Police Department has several thousand people apply to be police officers every year. And this last go around, they had five hundred people apply.
And I wonder why.
And there's varying reasons why, but, um, we are also in the same predicament as every other municipality in the area. Either fighting for police officers or having trouble, uh, getting new officers, um, to be able to even go to academy right now. So what I'm asking tonight, um, I believe I've talked to all of you guys and Chief McWilliams, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I would like approval, approval to make it a policy where police officer, they cannot take their squad home, but they can live in Edwards, White, Lawrence, or Richland County. It's not a time for talking, John. I do appreciate it. It's my report. Chief McWilliams, is that correct?
No, that's, yes, that's my opinion.
Okay.
Well, if we don't, we're gonna limit ourselves to the availability of anybody to fill the positions.
Exactly. Um, if we are able to go ahead and get somebody already trained and through the police academy, and they still have their credentials, we can get them on a lateral transfer, which saves us tens of thousands of dollars in training. Um, you know, right now, they can live in the county. We've got officers who live, you know, they have a residence in Lawrence County, and they have an apartment in Mount Carmel, which makes it legal for them to be an officer. But, with doing this, I mean, we got officers paying three hundred and fifty-plus dollars of utilities just to be able to be on our fours. And, um, I know we would rather have them live here in Wabash County, but, you know, I don't know.
Well, and at the end of the day, we lose officers to other areas.
Yes.
And we've trained them and lost them to those camp, uh, communities, uh, counties, cities in those areas, so.
But those areas pay more, I believe.
There are differences. Some of them do, not all of them.
Yes, some do. We've lost several, um, officers due to they're not from here. They come in, we train them, and, you know, they wanna move back to their, you know, home county.
So are you saying county, or are you gonna say within a certain distance?
County.
So if, what were those counties again?
Edwards, White, Lawrence, Richland.
They all.
So if they live in, you know, all the way to, I mean, it could be a forty-five minute plus drive for them to get here. If there's an emergency that we need them to come in, we're gonna be waiting an hour plus for, for.
Our officers usually are not on call, not like the fire department.
But I, okay.
But they, you know, we have, how many officers we have living in Wabash County right now?
Um, well, actually, all of them are except for one.
Right.
It has yet to relocate these across us. But, um, obviously, we have another one that is having to pay for another residence here. You're just quite in your net of potential candidates. And quite frankly, it is a, a national problem finding police officers. And agencies are modifying existing policies to try to make themselves more accommodable.
Right.
To, and, you know, we have had some officers that have expressed interest in possibly coming here. They like the way our agency runs, but then they maybe have children in a particular school or,
um, you know, maybe their wife works. So, be any number of things, um, and it may be of no benefit to us, but it certainly, I, I think it would be worth considering. Right, so.
When, when I was a chief, I checked with some other departments. Bloomington, Illinois, which is larger, obviously, they do not have a residency requirement. They can live in Charleston, Champaign, as long as they make it to work on time. Um, I know some of the state guys, like, there's a trooper in Fairfield drives to effing him at four days a week. So, I mean, that's an hour, I think, drive. I just, I know also there was, we were recruiting one officer, and he didn't wanna leave because his kids go to a private school, and he's forty minutes away. And he would've been a good, I think he went somewhere else, but he would've been good for us, so.
Well, if this was forty years ago, when everybody that was on the police department was in Mount Carmel, and everybody knew all of them, that was different than what we have today, because like you said, there's a shortage of law enforcement officers, and if we don't do this, we may be short on law enforcement.
Yeah, if we don't get ahead of the curve, Edwards, White, Lawrence, or Richland County.
And it would be kinda foolish to get your, get certified, be a police officer. You live in Richland County, but you're paying for three hundred and fifty dollar a month apartment in Mount Carmel. And as soon as he gets a chance to go to Richland County, he's gonna save that three fifty and go back home.
Right, and he's driving his own car from there now, so.
Do we have a requirement that they have to stay for X amount of days or pay back the training?
We looked into that with F O P, and, uh, we actually had.
We tried that one.
What was it, about ten years ago, that we actually had contracts?
Yes.
Signed. Someone left, and we tried to fight it, and, um, basically, we were told we couldn't do that, the F O P. And Brady, is that correct? We can get certain fees, but those contracts aren't worth.
Right, I mean, there's other ways that we've tried to do that.
We've done. We've done contracts on uniform cost, everything else. All of that was thrown out. When we had these two officers, one went to state police, and one just, uh, went to work for his father-in-law, driving a truck, and we lost out, um, on all of that. They just said we couldn't. It was not a, you know, we couldn't hold them to that type of contract.
We thought we were protected and, and out.
The state of Illinois is very interesting on employment contracts.
Think a bonus, is that correct? If we pay it, if we give them the bonus.
Yes.
They have to pay the bonus back, but that's the, basically, the only incentive on keeping them. And our bonus is five hundred dollars, so.
Yeah. I believe on the lateral transfers that we did, they have to stay a certain amount of time, or have to pay that lateral transfer bonus back. But, other than that.
Probably not more than a year, is it?
Uh, I think it's one year.
Yeah, most of them are a year.
Yeah, one year.
So.
Probation is eighteen months, but the, um, one year for a contract.
I just think that, I, I mean, I know that that's probably what we're gonna have to do, but at the same time, our taxes are the ones that are paying their salaries, and they're not gonna be paying any of those taxes. And we're losing out on all of the, on the revenue from them living here, and their, all of their revenues and things are going to other communities. All their tax, you know, the tax money that we're spending on them, we're not, I don't, just not getting. But I also understand that, I understand that, but I don't know, I, maybe, a certain mileage as opposed to the entire county is, and I, I get that, that they don't have to be on call. But, you know, if Mike, somebody calls in sick, you know, and you need to get that shift covered right away, then, you know, it's gonna be maybe a two-hour drive before somebody get, not a drive, but two-hour time difference before somebody gets here. By the time they get showered and dressed and, that's my concern.
I understand the concern. I just, we just, if you do a mileage, where do you start it at? Where do you end it at? Um.
If you can't, you can't really do a radius, cause if you get, do a radius, then you're gonna include Indiana into it.
Yeah, sure.
And right now, that's not included, so.
Mayor, is there any reason we include Richland County into this proposal?
We had somebody interested from Richland County that liked how we were running our police department. That was interested. That's why they were included.
That would be the farthest one. I mean, of course, you got White County, you, I don't have a problem with it personally. I mean, I, we gotta have officers on duty, that's all I can say. And I, there's a lot of people drive to Evansville every day to go to work or farther, so.
How far do you drive to your office, Eric?
Well, when I go, it's thirty-five minutes or so.
Well, to my office on Old Boonville Highway is forty-seven minutes, so. That's just to that.
Mikey, we have, we have officers we could call, I mean, in an emergency like Suzanne's talking, Susan's talking about, we have officers that we could call in to.
Honestly, when we have times of emergency, I have people calling me, asking if they need to come in, or can they come in?
Right.
Can they pitch in?
All hands on deck at that time.
Yeah, and, you know, of course, you may have to, to, to wait for someone to do that. But a lot of times, I've had some of them, I mean, they'll kinda forecast, like if we know bad weather, hey, I'm gonna be available if you need anything, call me. And they kinda make themselves ready when they do need to. Now, when something happens that we can't predict, certainly, there's gonna be, fortunately, it doesn't happen very often. But, um, I'm really afraid the next time we have to do a test, that we're gonna end up with maybe investing in four candidates. And then, quite frankly, a lot of times you end up with one by the time you do background. I mean, it just, I mean, if the state police, they're in the same boat as Chicago, they have a couple hundreds go up instead of a couple thousand. Um, I, I don't know what the answer is. It's a generational thing, vector change, social media has not helped. Um, you know, you can go down the list. And I think we have to make ourselves as marketable as we can just to have.
I agree.
It just, it just doesn't, I mean, it's not requiring us to utilize someone from out of there. It just gives it an option if we need options.
Just open discussion.
I mean, at this point, so.
We need a motion? Is that what we're looking for?
Uh, here in a second. And I understand Commissioner Zimmerman's, um, concern about the tax thing. Um, I actually had a candid conversation with your father about it. Uh, but, um, you know, the realization, I mean, just get down to the brass tacks. We have, what, three point nine percent unemployment here in Mount Carmel right now, which is a wonderful number. But, you know, what's that number of people working in Indiana versus here in Wabash County? It's a big difference. Um, and we all spend money everywhere. It's, I say it's global, but it is everywhere. But we would like for them to live here in town, but like, you know.
I think a lot of them would move here so they don't have to drive, right?
Oh, yeah.
The, the, my only concern about it, and, and it wouldn't be anything that happens soon, would be as the issues get even worse, as you try to hire people.
Yep.
That seventy-five percent of your force doesn't live here.
Right.
That's what you gotta worry about. That's probably not in your tenure. You know what I'm saying? Like, it's down, it's down the road, but you gotta, you gotta keep that in mind.
You know, certainly, it can be reevaluated at any time. And if that becomes an issue, if we don't like the way the numbers are going, it may have to be modified by the council.
Yeah, that's my.
You know.
It's still into the chief and police and fire commission, and everybody making the decision.
Yeah.
Like I said, it's not requiring it. It's just allowing it.
Yeah.
Certainly, we would prefer them to be here for a number of reasons.
Yeah.
It's just sometimes it's not in the cards, and we may sound, we may spend twenty thousand, get someone trained, when we could've hired somebody that's gonna drive thirty minutes to work, just because they want their, their child to go to a particular school or what have you. So it just depends on how you wanna look at it.
Sure, no, I understand that.
And in case of emergency and stuff, we do have, uh, city marshals that do jump up and jump in quite frequent, so.
I usually have to sell people to stay home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Honestly.
I think over, overall, it's, it's a fine idea. I just, that, that's my concern.
Yeah.
One, one of these days, not soon.
Sure, absolutely.
So anyways, um, yes, now I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same side? Alright. John, did you have anything?
I did, yeah, I don't want to take anybody's time.
But I'm in the middle of a report. Did it have to do with what we were, okay, so, yeah, so I'll get back to you. Right, well, we'll talk about it. Yeah, I'll call on you later. Alright.
No, in fact, all I wanna say was, uh, simply, Officer, and everyone, um, I lived in New York City for, uh, thirty years in, in New York. The situation was in the nineties, most, a lot of, uh, police officers didn't live in New York, lived in Jersey. And what happened was they, they began to have a combat mentality when they came into the city, cause they didn't live in the city.
Right.
They just lived in the neighborhoods that were protected. And it became very, uh, it was a, was a combat mentality. So my, my only thing, what I was taking my head about was, I think it's really important, really important, that the peace officers know the people.
Yep.
They don't, they don't just come in and feel like they have to guard them or, you know, corral them. They know them.
Yep.
Because, yeah, you, you're an officer. Nine times out of ten, you can solve a situation before it becomes a situation, because you know the guy.
Yep.
And like, oh.
Can you be policing?
You know, that's all I'm, that's all I'm saying. I think it's very important that it's, that police officers are living in the community.
Alright.
I think that's offset in, in our community by our leadership at the police department.
Mm-hmm.
They, they, uh, do such a nice job with having a, that mentality that we work as best as we can with our community. So, uh, if we got the leadership right, it works its way down.
And we do have.
Alright, thank you. Um, also want your approval of adding a holiday to our schedule for our employees. Currently, we do not get, or we do not give our employees Martin Luther Day, Martin Luther King Day off January seventeenth. I would like your approval tonight on adding that holiday for our employees.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same side? Alright. Um, I sent an email out to you guys earlier today to let you know I was gonna speak about this. Um, I'm asking approval tonight, um, for the city to start up a scholarship fund. It'd be two seven hundred and fifty-dollar scholarships for seniors at M C H S each year. This money, uh, will be coming out of the gaming revenue from the gambling machines here in town. I think that the city needs to step up and do something positive with this money. Um, and the best thing we can do with it is investing in our youth and our future. So, So, I would like a motion to start this, um, scholarship fund. We'll get applications out to the MCHS Guidance Council, uh, counselor soon, and basically as a council, we will make the decision on who we award these to in probably April. So, do I have a motion?
Joe, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What are these gonna be based upon?
What's it gonna be based upon?
Yes, is it need, is it community service, what, what, do you know that?
I don't know that, we'll work on that before we get it to the counselor, that's something that all of us will kinda work together on.
When we put it out for application?
When?
No.
Oh, we'll have all that before we put it out for application.
So there'll be some criteria that we'll.
Yes.
We need to put in like.
Yeah, but that is a good, good, uh, question, when, when would we put this out, if it's for seniors going in there, do you think?
Uh, we probably will put it for, um, at the Guidance Counselor probably in February.
I was gonna say February, March.
Yeah, that's about when everybody else.
Depending when you want them to be returned by to have time to award them, I would assume it honors night on.
Yes.
Before graduation in May.
You know, I think, you know, a big thing to base it on, kinda like Susan said, was, is, you know, s- service to the community and stuff like that, and then, uh, need and, uh, several different factors, so.
That's great.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Alright, we'll leave that to the next meeting, we're done spending money, you're welcome. Alright, Commissioner Meeks.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, before I start my report, Mike, you mentioned the golf carts a while ago, there's been some confusion on these stickers. Uh, I know when we first started this, they were just kinda hapha- haphazardly handed or purchased. Uh, are we gonna do like January one of this year, everybody has to have a twenty twenty-two sticker, or they're in violation?
Right, after I, I've spoken to the mayor and, and, uh, city administrator, and I think that's kinda the direction we're going, that by, like. Presently, if you buy a sticker now, I'm giving you a twenty twenty-two sticker that will be in effect until January of the following year.
Okay.
So, yes, I think that that would be, now the problem is, obviously, we're gonna have a little issue, some, somebody may have bought one last month, and then. They subject to buying another one in January to get everyone in compliance, but I don't really have an answer to fix that, so.
He wouldn't have a green shirt on, would he? He bought two of them, I think. Yes.
Well, I guess, the only thing I would say that, I mean, yeah, you're gonna be a little bit into that, you're gonna have a little bit, the one thing, I'm curious how you would handle it, is so if someone's sticker expired in March. And they didn't, they don't come in until January, are we gonna, we should, in my mind, we should charge them for this year too.
I agree.
I agree fully.
You know, I know this last quarter of the year is kinda different in my mind, as you're going into the winter and you're down at the end, so, I just make sure we're clear on that.
Another question I had was, are we gonna give them a grace period, cause you know, January one, you got holidays and they're out, are you giving them a grace period or?
Grace, grace, she died three years ago.
I'm not looking to write any ordinance to comply, quite frankly, we would just remind someone, hey, you need to go out now, if we told you here through times, then yeah, you may expect, and, I don't know, it's not, we're not in the business of writing ordinance violations, um, in general. Uh, we like to, to try to work with people, not against them, and, and this would be a perfect example, um, so, we would definitely have a grace period, uh, whatever you all deem appropriate, but.
Right.
Um, I, I just, especially in this particular case, we're transitioning, I think we may be able to land a change, um, and.
You don't see very many of them out in January and February, though.
Side by side.
Side by side.
Side by side, you will see a lot more of them.
I think that as a council, we kinda maybe didn't think about that when we did it, and should've done that out of the gate.
Yep.
Because there's no way you're gonna remember if you got a sticker March.
Exactly.
Twenty-fifth, that you gotta go in and get one next March twenty-fifth, unless you put it on your calendar, like I did, but, um, but most people aren't thinking about that, so it needs to be a specific date, and that's a good way to get it cleaned up.
Yeah, I agree.
Whatever you gotta do to get it cleaned up.
So if you have a twenty twenty sticker right now, you gotta buy your twenty twenty-one sticker, and then your twenty twenty-two before you, well, you gotta buy your twenty-one sticker before you can get your twenty-two sticker, as far as a grace period. What do you guys think, in thirty days?
If everybody knows.
Say, why should there be a grace period?
Well.
I mean.
It's Christmas time.
You get, got nothing to do with it, eh?
I mean, we get, we're giving them three months to buy them.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a month, you got three months to get it figured out, I mean.
I don't care, I don't even have one. I say give them no time, no, I'm just kidding, I, I don't know, a month?
Week, I mean, well, that's giving them, well, I guess to the, the first week of January, I mean, that would be.
Just cause our city.
Cause you guys said, you're giving them three months notification that they've got to get their carts and UTVs up to date.
Whatever you guys think.
Give them two weeks after January first, if you don't have it on, you're in violation.
January fifteenth.
Let me just look at the calendar here, sorry.
That's fine.
January first falls on a Saturday, so the fifteenth is a.
Saturday.
A Saturday.
Do the fourteenth, by the fourteenth.
Just two weeks.
Yep.
Perfect.
Friday the fourteenth, there you go.
Alright.
And other than coming to the police department to purchase those, is there going to be any place else a person can get those?
Not directly, I'm not opposed to, to holding something at the golf course or what have you, but, um, sometimes it's, uh, very busy, and other times, uh, we really aren't, so.
You have a meet and greet at the golf course, maybe a couple of days, and.
I mean, that's.
I'll, I'll buy your lunch and.
And if, and if, if, if we're able to, um, the officer, as far as doing an original, like, just certify your golf cart, if you get a new one, and maybe they will come to your home and do it, we're not having to load it on a trailer and bring it up to the, the police department. As far as the renewals, you just simply stop in the police department at your convenience twenty-four hours a day and say, hey, I need a renewal.
Right.
I mean, you can do in and out in five minutes.
Okay.
Should we make them bring their insurance with them, so we ensure that they've got insurance and are compliant?
That's not a bad idea.
Yes, I would say yes.
Not a good idea.
I know when I renewed mine, I.
Yeah, it should come to this, like, I have, you know, or the city receives mine through my insurance company, but I know the one incident we have had with a golf cart here recent, it was kinda hard to get the insurance card, so. And you have to have that insurance card on your car at all times when you're on public road, no different than your car, so, anyway, little plug for car insurance. So, alright, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Keith Brothers been bringing sidewalk approaches into compliance with the ADA requirements, these approaches are on Oak Street from College Drive to Third Street. And from Fifth Street to Oak Street, or on the Mulberry, paving should start pretty quick. Stabilization was able to complete the fog seal in just one day versus the three days allotted, and we were able to save some money on materials. Uh, we had two grave openings at Rose Hill, water sewer maintenance did the sea, the second one due to the fog ceiling, our guys were all busy doing that, so this is why. This is why we went to the public works. Things just like that, usually the street department guys, open graves, close the graves, this time it was water sewer maintenance, and we appreciate it. It's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Meeks, Commissioner Akemeyer.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, past two weeks, not a whole lot in the receipts department, uh, two thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars, expenditures of one hundred and forty-one thousand and some change, leaving us a little over one point six million in the general fund. But, we are, uh, forty-nine percent of our revenue budget, uh, with, through, I guess, roughly five months of the fiscal year, so we're, we're ahead of schedule there and doing, I think everything's coming in pretty nicely as far as, uh, where we sit in, in our, uh, main categories as far as sales tax, income tax, and those, those things, so. And, uh, just thought I'd mention, since I was, uh, when I pulled up my calendar, I had a note that the Lady Ace's golf team is, um, a fourteen shot lead with two holes to play.
Awesome.
Um, in the sectional right now, um, so most of them are done, but there may be one or two still out there, so, they are in good, good position to, um, with a couple holes left, so.
Hopefully in a week or two, Mr. Turner can call the Illinois Department of Transportation and order that state championship sign on our entrance, so.
Don't jinx him.
I was gonna say, yeah, I'm with Justin.
End of my report.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Akemeyer, Commissioner Dogger.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Water Department Keith has collected his monthly samples today, um, and sent them to the EPA, yes, he does, uh, sample water every day, but these specific samples are done once a month and are sent directly to the EPA. He has started cleaning, or the group down there has started cleaning the filter walls, um, as part of the regular maintenance, and tonight, we will have the first reading of ordinance twenty fifty-seven to increase the loan amount, uh, for the water plant, which was approved by the EPA, and I believe, Mike, you're gonna discuss that in a little bit, right? Okay, and then, Maintenance Department, they have been helping the sewer with a lot of, uh, tedious issues down at the plant, uh, with the manpower being short, uh, right now. And, well, so Josh Peach went ahead and resigned a couple weeks ago, uh, his last day was September seventeenth, um, and, uh, so we've, we've been kinda shorthanded down there, Stephen Rowe has been, uh, uh. Doing a lot of the extra duties, uh, down at the sewer plant, and then water sewer maintenance has been, uh, helping out on a daily basis. Just like the water, um, sewer maintenance was down there helping with the sludge press, which should be back in full operation very soon, I don't wanna give you an exact date. Rob Weins is down at the sewer plant, former employee, um, to help us out, graciously helping us out because his, he has his class one license. Uh, when Josh left, uh, Josh, uh, had his license, um, but Ron is stepping in while we, uh, figure out what we're going to do for the future about getting someone, uh, their class one license. We are also working on certi- certification for our testing lab, and the EPA requires, or the state requires that every, every so often periodically. And Public Works was down there, uh, again, helping, um, clean up the scrap, which we ended up getting how much?
Two hundred and sixteen, was that right?
Couple hun- couple hundred bucks, but I mean, it was just, uh, scrap laying around, but, uh, it seems like, uh, uh, everything's working well within the city, end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Dogger, Commissioner Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mayor, um, as the mayor stated earlier, there are firefighter applications being accepted, um, those, again, like you said, are on the website, if you go to the website, you can click the application button, and it'll tell you exactly what all needs to be, um, completed prior to actually applying, so there are a list of things that need to be done. Um, the Fire Department has been doing some, um, tours for the grade school kids, kindergarten's been there, a couple of different classes from the kindergarten have been there. Captain Mark was there today, Captain Seaton, and was given a tour of the kid, for the kids today, um, it's great, he does a great job of working with them. Um, and I think that's great that we offer that service, so that the kids aren't afraid if, if the firemen come in and, and need some, you know, if there's a fire, that it really makes the kids aware of what's going on. They had several runs, um, they had, uh, a couple of different, um, medical assists, they had, uh, some outside trash, um, within the last couple of weeks, um, for a total of. Seven calls in the last, uh, couple of weeks, in addition to their, um, public relations events that they've been doing. This is big trash pickup week, um, if you were not, if you did not get your big trash items out, they're picking them up today, the majority of them, they will be picking them up on Tuesday and Wednesday also this week, so if you did not get yours picked up today, they will still potentially be picked up, they just haven't gotten to all of them. But this is, um, big trash pickup week, and if you would like, um, if you don't think that yours, you know, they totally missed you, um, or you didn't get yours out yet, then you can call up to City Hall, and we'll try and get arrangements to get that picked up, um, end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Zimmerman, Mr. Turner.
Alright, all I really have is a report on the auction that we had of excess equipment, we haven't got the total numbers in, but we grossed over twenty-nine thousand dollars, so that was a good, um.
Amazing.
Good fix-up cleanup for the city, uh, so, that, once we settle up with, uh, Mowgli Grant, that money will fit to work accordingly, that's all I have.
Great job, by the way, on that.
Yes, we had actually, um, two vehicles that we purchased five years ago, and, um, me and Mr. Whitman and Mr. Easter went to Springfield to USDA and purchased them for eleven hundred dollars apiece and brought them back. I believe one went for thirty-six fifty, and the other one for twenty-seven fifty. And they had a lot more miles on them now than what they had back then, so, um.
Gonna go pick up some more of them?
Yeah, it'd be nice. Alright, thank you, Mr. Turner, Mr. Walder.
No report time.
No report? We've had you busy here lately, though.
Yeah.
Going after a lot of properties and things like that.
Yep, we're getting them cleaned up.
Alright, Chief McWilliams. What, Justin?
Nothing.
Oh, sorry. Chief Speth.
Go ahead, I brought this up last meeting, and as Chief McWilliams, I was walking in, looked up the alley, and we had smoke up in the alley, and we still have the issue with people burning brush and city limits and stuff, so, other than that, so I'll have my air.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Dogger has, uh, told me that our girls' golf team have officially won sectionals. So that's great, good job, ladies, hopefully, uh, our softball team did well today, too.
They did not.
They did not?
They lost.
I couldn't hardly, I found it on the radio a little bit, but like, Facebook's literally been shut down all day.
Yeah.
By the way, did you know that Facebook lost seven billion dollars today?
Ah, what's seven billion?
You're terrible, Paul.
Uh-huh.
Poor man.
Yeah. Well, that's a bummer on the softball, and those girls played hard, so.
A little Bill Gates now. True story.
But congratulations to the Lady Ace's Golf Team. Mr. Getcom.
Alright, we'll start out in the consent agenda, you have two ordinances in there that are the first readings only, we'll be having the second reading with the next council. The first one, twenty fifty-seven, it's just an amendment, even though we have to write the complete ordinance over, we passed this one earlier in the year, before the bids came in. And now we have to update our number for the bids, so all we are is, we're increasing the number to match what the bid mu- numbers came in now. So we have to rewrite that ordinance completely, putting a new number in.
And then in two weeks, we'll, we'll prove it, or we'll, we'll bring it to council.
And if it's approved in two weeks, I've asked Terry Boyer to come in.
Yep.
At that time, and he will present his recommendation for tho- of those bids that, that were opened up.
Yes.
Perfect.
Uh, the second one that's in there is vacating a portion of South Mulberry Street, there's been, years and years ago, there was a house that was built in the middle of Mulberry Street, it's down by the public, public utility, Mount Carmel Public Utility. Their, uh, main work area down there where their main barns are at. They have requested to, they bought the house itself, and they've requested that we vacate that, to kinda clean up the mess that we've got down there with that house being in the middle of Mulberry Street, so, uh. That's just the first reading on that one, we're gonna go ahead and vacate that property, if you approve it on the next one, but that's just the first reading to vacate that, there are still some key, some issues that we're working on.
Yeah, literally, that house is in the middle of the street.
And it is, and the last thing that I've got, I handed each one of you, and I handed the news media the, uh, bill of leave schedule, we're gonna, we're planning on getting it started October the eighteenth. Uh, we're gonna start on the east side, so the streets east of Walnut and south of Froman Drive, that are highlighted in the map in green, will be the first area that they start on. As soon as they're done with that area, they'll go to number two, which is highlighted in the orange, and those are the streets west of Walnut and south of fifteen twenty Poplar, including Oak Meadows and Lambert subdivisions. Then when they finish that area, they will immediately go to the streets that are highlighted in blue, and these streets are north of Thirteenth Street, including some, the subdivisions north of Thirteenth, and you'll see them highlighted in there. And as soon as they finish that, they'll start back over on the green, in the past, we have been called to go back and hit areas before we would get every area taken care of. This year, we're gonna, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna go through the complete rounds, that way everybody gets their leave picked up. End of my report, sir.
You've omitted Skiles Drive.
It's cause you. We don't know if I live there.
Yeah. That's okay, I don't have any trees. Huh?
It is private, they gotta take care of it all.
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you for the report, Mr. Getcom. All right, does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda?
Nope.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Oppose the same sign, all right. Mr. Clancy.
Oh, thank you. Thank you all, I'll have to agree, um. Uh, this, this is good news, this is about the festival that's coming, I was gonna give you guys these, these are right to hide off the presses. Um, and these are due to the due diligence of Gordon Lint under the tutelage, I believe, of Councilor, Commissioner Zimmerman, correct?
Kind of.
Kind of.
I, I cannot disclose that.
These are our first tribal brochures. Y'all, okay. You want to turn up? Um, this is our festival, so it's gonna happen, um, I'm just telling you guys, I had a wonderful meeting with Mike Harris Insurance, and, um, Mr. Turner was supposed to be there, but he was on vacation, so, uh, Chief Williams, uh, took his place. So, uh, it's, it's, it's coming together in a really nice way. Uh, Friday, we're gonna do an art display, uh, local art sale and display on the street, uh, I, I believe only between fourth and fifth, unless we have more art. I don't know if you all know Raven Drone, she's the new art teacher out of the high school, she's really excited about the whole thing, so she's gonna have her students, we're gonna commission artwork. And I, I put this plea out on social, and here, exactly right, Facebook was down all day, which kept me from doing a lot of work, but I'll put this out to you guys in this room. Oil painting was a big thing, when my grandparents were around, and my uncles and my aunts, everybody used to do that, they'd play cards with oil paint. There are oil paintings in your basement, in your attic, in your closets, let's bring them out. Let's display the local art of Mount Carmel, of Walbash County. That's Friday. Uh, Saturday, we're gonna have the, the new play reading, I just talked to Father Robert at Saint Mary's, he's gonna let me use his, uh, parking lot for a big bouncy house. So it'll be a children's thing, face painting, whatnot, and then music from two to nine at Merchant Park. Sunday, we're gonna do a cookout, and we're gonna rechristen the community art wall. Now, of all the things I've done in this town over the last three years, easily, the most contentious is that wall, easily. People are like, what is that, man, that's terrible. I'm like, I painted it. Your kids painted it, but here's our goal, if I can get a piece of it to do it, we'll white it over, we'll make it pure and beautiful white. And then we're starting again. And everyone could show up and, and paint it. So, I mean, that is, well, finally, I just wanna quickly thank, I don't wanna to everybody, but I have to thank Raven Drone, Constance Folsom, uh, Corey and Kelly Cadburn, Vic Singh, um, Kyle Dunn, Gordon Lint, the chief, um. Yeah, so please come out, please support me, I think, I, I believe that if we can plant a flag, make this thing work once, and we get the, uh, county, counties involved, excited, this can become a real thing, this can become a thing that will thrive, and I, I've said this to y'all before, but I'll say it again, the arts are an economic engine. The arts are not something over here, the arts are an economic engine that could really drive this town, could really drive this town. Somebody shows up to see a play, guess what, they're buying gas. They're buying hot dog, you know? Factories aren't coming back here. But if artists come here, and people come here, oh, Mount Carmel, that, yeah, that's the place where you have all that fun. Oh, yeah. Bucks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clancy, all right. Anybody have anything else we need to discuss this evening?
I don't think so.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make it.
Second.
I just wanna stay here all night. I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Zimmerman, all those in favor say aye.
Who said that?
We can beat anyone in that, they'll still be happy.
Oh, sure.
No offense, Justin.